Thank you. At this time, I will open the public hearing for application CUP dash zero two dash two zero, Commercial Kennel Dog Boarding Training and Grooming Facility.
All right, thank you ma'am. I'm going to give a brief overview of the application and Mr. Johnson has a PowerPoint. Mr. Brandon Johnson is in the back, has requested a conditional use permit to construct and operate a commercial kennel, dog boarding, training, breeding, and grooming facility on a currently vacant property on Stage Road in Lenexa. The property is located basically across Stage Road from Mountain Laurel Grove and a map is included in your packet. The property is zoned A1 agricultural and is approximately 15 acres in size. Section ninety-eight dash sixty-two of the zoning ordinance requires a conditional use permit to be obtained for commercial kennel operations in the A1 zoning. Another 15 acre parcel is located directly south of the proposed kennel parcel and the applicant's intent is to construct a home on that parcel. The application states that the kennel facility will be set back about 500 feet from Stage Road and the hours of operation are expected to be normal business hours of Monday through Friday from nine AM to five PM with exceptions made outside these hours via appointment only. After consulting with the Health Department, a traditional septic system will be needed to handle the wastewater from the facility and a traditional well will be needed to provide the water needs. All solid waste will be collected and disposed of at the New Kent Refuge Facilities. If the CUP application is approved, the applicant will move on to the site plan stage. At that point, the applicant will be required to address any environmental concerns and work with VDOT to make sure that entrance, site distance, and spacing requirements are met. The standards for review of conditional use permits are set forth in section ninety-eight dash seven forty-four of the code and are listed in your staff memo. Staff received several written comments from adjacent property owners that can be found at your places tonight. There are ten suggested conditions listed in Resolution PC dash zero five dash twenty. Staff recommends approval of a conditional use permit with these conditions. Now I invite Mr. Johnson to come up. Oh, we lost the mouse again. Oh, there it is. All right, you should be good to go.
Hello, I'm Brandon Johnson. I want to thank the planning commission for having us here today and fellow New Kent citizens for having us here and introducing ourselves to you. So my wife and I and our family are proposing starting a boarding and kennel facility, family owned and ran here in New Kent, myself, Brandon, and Tricia, my wife, who's in the back here with me today as well. A couple of the renderings that are on our PowerPoint presentation here are the renderings that we've been working with and we have contacted several companies at this point to work on these renderings. This is not the final rendering, but this is the vision and the plan and the idea that we have for that. Okay? Oh, put the mask down. Okay, sorry. Maybe you can understand me a little better. Our goal is for this business, we want to run a successful business working with and caring for dogs, live in a beautiful natural setting, and most importantly, spend more quality time together as a family. We plan to build a safe, high-quality facility drawing upon design recommendations from other successful kennel owners and veterinarians as well as from our own experience. I'm in that consulting phase now with several other boarding facilities I know not in the current area because there's not much in the current area, but I do know several kennel boarding facility owners. I'm working with them, our veterinarian which is on the west side of Richmond, and a couple of other veterinarians that I'm close friends with to try to get the best practices in place for sanitation and health requirements for the dogs as long as kennel design. Our kennel building will be constructed in a way that maximizes the aesthetic value of the property, adds to the scenic country views of New Kent, and limits noise and land disturbance. As stated by Kelly, our goal is we're buying two adjoining properties, about 15 acres each, so total of 30 acres. We plan on building our home on the adjoining 15 acres, so obviously, we want to limit noise and light obstruction and all those things as much as we can if we're going to live next door to the facility. Okay? Oh, there we go. A little bit about us, Brandon Johnson, I was born in Lee County, Virginia. I work as a strength and conditioning coach at the Bonds Core Sports Performance Training Center in Richmond, Virginia, avid upland bird hunter, passionate about dogs, and that's what kind of started the whole thing here. My wife, Tricia, born and raised here in New Kent, big reason of why we're here, works as a scientist at the State Health Laboratory, DCLS, in Richmond, and she wanted to make sure I said this, up until this point with the COVID response, her laboratory's been responsible for designing 85,000 test kits for the pandemic response, so. And that number is only going up as they streamline their process, so they're doing a good job to do that. And then the third member of our family, human anyway, Morgan, our daughter, who's eight years old, currently attends George Watkins Elementary School. My little dog trainer help works, especially once school got canceled, and we've been spending a lot of time together lately, and that is our family that we want to hopefully run this business with. Facility design, property layout, the kennel facility will be set back approximately 500 feet from Stage Road. I think the requirements from the county were a little bit less than that, but we think where it will fit in most aesthetically is a little bit farther removed from the main road, so we'll have a longer road, entry road, to the facility off of Stage Road. It'll be designed, you saw the first rendering there, so the main building that will house the office, the dog grooming stuff will look like a traditional barn, and it'll include laundry room, the boarding, and office, and those kind of things. Behind the main building, we'll have two elongated buildings. These buildings will face each other to set perpendicular to the main building, limiting their visibility from the road and parking area. Each building will contain our climate-controlled kennels. The outdoor portion of the runs will face inwards toward each other, creating a U-shaped courtyard design limiting barking noise hopefully. One quick note on that one, even though the kennel buildings will be facing each other, there will be a barrier down the middle. The kennels will be roughly 60 feet apart from each other by the end of it, and then a barrier down the middle to kind of stop dogs barking at each other from across the way, because once they see each other, they want to bark. So if you have a barrier there, you'll kind of eliminate some of that noise. We plan to further improve the property, like I said, by building our forever home on the adjoining 15 acres, so we really want to make this a home site and run our business there. Here's two more renderings. The top one there is a shed row barn, for anybody that's kind of familiar with that terminology. That's what the kennel runs will look like. You'll have an indoor portion there where the dogs can be kept at night, right? And then they'll only be let out in the exterior runs during the day or on a rotating schedule of how many dogs will be let out at one time. And then the courtyard area there in the middle will have separated chain link areas as well where you can let dogs out for a little bit more room. There is potential for the top of the screen to maybe even put more outdoor runs if, you know, we need more exercise areas for the dogs, but as of right now, we're looking at making four larger exercise areas inside that courtyard area that are chain linked off, and you can let dogs in there for more exercise. And then the main building there, so that's the design and look that we're trying to go for with the kennel facility. And then just more pictures of our family, some of our dogs, one of those dogs is a dog I'm helping train, and then we do breed puppies. We have a litter of wire-haired Vishlos and smooth Vishlos, and that's our daughter who helps us tremendously with raising of the puppies and some of her friends. And it's just another picture of our family there. So just opening up for any questions, or just go to you next?
Go ahead.
Okay.
Thank you. At this time, I will open the citizens' comments period for public hearing.
Okay.
All right. Thank you. Sorry, not used to these microphones. So the first name on the list is Cheryl Russell, and again, please state your name when you come to the podium and your address. And you have three minutes.
Yes, ma'am. Good evening. My name is Cheryl Russell. I live at thirteen nine hundred Mountain Laurel Grove, Lenexa, Virginia. I'm sure you just heard them say that this is right across from Mountain Laurel Grove. I would also like to thank Ms. Laduke and Ms. Adams, who were very helpful to me on this. On the ninth of July, I saw a sign across from our driveways, and I went, hmm? And so I took a picture of it. On the tenth, I called, left a message for Kelly. She returned my call, but I missed her. By the weekend, which was the eleventh and twelfth of July, we were going a little crazy out there, buddy calling everybody back and forth because we can't get together and have a neighborhood meeting, needless to say. Monday, the thirteenth, I picked up the packet to find out exactly what was going on, made some copies, passed them out to some of the neighbors, and my friends, that was one week ago today. It was like, hi, here we are, boom! We have had hardly any chance to get our feet underneath us on this, to even know what is going on, definitely. And we feel that this has been very much rushed as far as notification. The letters were dated on the ninth. I believe they went out on the tenth, and I'm not real sure when folks got them, but remember, if they were mailed in New Kent County, or at the New Kent Courthouse, then they had to go to Lenexa to be resorted and come out to people. We have had essentially one week to take a look and see what we're dealing with. All right? Now you have at least one letter, well, no, two letters in your packet. I hope you will read them. One is from the arsonists. He's probably getting off work about now, right now, so that's why he brought a letter in today. Bill Jones, also I know, brought a letter in today. He's concerned about the precedent that this is setting. We think the least that could be done would be to put this back for some period of time and give us a chance to look and see what we're dealing with. I heard the beeper, okay? Thank you for your attention, and please consider that this will affect us in our neighborhood. Thank you.
Steven Russell?
Commissioners, appreciate your listening.
Please state your name and who you represent.
Yes. I'm Steven Russell, and I live at thirteen nine hundred Mountain Laurel Grove, with that lady. Against her will. Anyway, I retired from the state a few years ago. I spent 31 years serving the state as an environmental engineer. I retired as a chief environmental planner in Richmond, and my primary concerns are the road, Stage Road. This section of Stage Road is narrow, no shoulders. It's one of those prime and seal type roads that are fairly common in the county, but it's pretty poorly maintained. This, I won't talk to the fact that this is a commercial proposal in an A1 zoned area and is not consistent with the, you know, the land use plan. But I would suggest to you that as a commercial enterprise, it's unfit for the zoning and use, current use and proposed use. It will require a commercial entrance, which is a two-lane entrance, a two-lane road going back to the facility. It will have noise impacts, increased traffic, increased maintenance of the road, and of course, the noise factor. We hear dogs bark from our neighbors, which may be a thousand or 2,000 feet away. So 500 feet with a whole bunch of dogs, that's going to be a lot of noise for us on Mountain Laurel Grove. There will be also traffic problems. It's a narrow road without shoulders again, and it is a dangerous road. It's barely able people to pass each other on this road. There's substandard curvature, essentially a blind turn coming into this area, and this will only aggravate the situation there. And those are essentially my thoughts on this proposal. I would like to have more opportunity to study the environmental effects of this proposal, considering the fact that it is going to affect our groundwater possibly. We are all on whales out there. They're proposing a whale. I'm pretty sure that drainage from this property will flow towards the public water supply, the reservoir, and that's another consideration I think you should take.
For example, your kindness requires.
Thank you.
And then I have R. Solinski.
Yes, yes. My name is Richard Solinski. I live at one thirty-eight twenty-five Mountain Laurel Grove, which is right across from the property that you're proposing to build a kennel, which is defined in the New Kent County zoning ordinance as a commercial endeavor. This is a residential area, okay? Another thing as well, that it will not impair the value of the property, and it definitely will. It will impair the property of people's homes, having a kennel across the road. And if you're truly interested in what goes on in New Kent, you wouldn't approve this. Thank you very much.
Thanks.
Madam Chairman, I didn't understand, didn't know this was going to be heard, but I'm going to tell you folks, I met this man, Brandon Johnson, one time on a professional hunt, and I'm going to tell you, he was meticulous. It was crazy how wonderful the dogs were trained. I mean, it wasn't a, let's go and spend a bunch of money and go hunting. This was a first-class operation like you'd see on TV somewhere. I was very much impressed with him. It was one of his bird hunts, every time someone would dip their gun the wrong way, he'd be right on you. So I don't know much about what he proposes except what I see, and I think this is exactly what you should be able to do in the country. He's not talking about silvicultural. Silver culture would be like 10,000 chickens or 10,000 hogs. This man is a breeder of dogs, and I can tell you from what I've seen, he had the highest degree of care, and there wasn't a minute that I thought that he wasn't something, that he belonged on Mutual of Omaha's Wild Kingdom. It was that impressive. So all I can tell you is what I've seen about this man, he's a professional, he does an excellent job, and I have a big old house, and I wish he'd put it next to mine. I'd be okay with it, based on what I've seen. Thank you.
Mr. Daniels?
Your address.
Would you state your address for the record?
Thirty-nine thirty-six Rand Acres Drive, Quentin, Virginia, center of the universe, New Kent, Virginia.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Sar, would you like to?
I didn't sign up to speak, but I've been sitting here two hours now, I wish I could speak on this subject.
Yes, please. Please approach the podium, state your name and address for the record.
My name is Glenn Young, ninety-one fifty Deer Trace Lane. I'm coming at this from a little different angle. Everybody talks about what's happening on Stage Road. I'm concerned with what's happening there, plus on Clark Road. My family is the Clarks. They've been in this county since early 1700s. We still maintain the old farm, the farmhouse. If you went in it, you'd think you might live there. We've got about 100 acres there, mostly cleared. My family's still, cousins still farm it. The property that backs up to, it actually hits a little piece of ours where the field comes in. So we're concerned about the noise, the dogs barking. I mean, I'm a dog lover, I've had dogs all my life, but that's a commercial operation, and everybody that lives around there, I've got cousins that live on the property, everybody that lives around there, move there for the seclusion and the country atmosphere. Everybody that has dogs knows that it doesn't take the two dogs to yak, and you can hear it from a long way away. This operation is going to be a lot of dogs, and when you get that many dogs together, it's going to be constant noise. They say they go operate nine to five. That's ideal, but people go to work earlier than that, they go drop their dogs off to get them groomed or stay or trained. People get off work late, they're going to be in there, like the man earlier said, it's a little two-lane road. You know, basically, you know, it shouldn't be, I'm all for that kind of operation in the county, but I think there are other areas that are more suited for something like that rather than around where people live and going to be affected by the traffic and the noise. So, you know, thank you.
At this time, I will close the citizens' comments period for public hearing, and then I will close the public hearing. I'll close the public hearing for application CUP dash zero two dash two zero, Commercial Kennel Dog Boarding Training and Grooming Facility, and turn it back over to you, Madam Chairman.
Thank you, Katie. Okay, Commissioners, what questions do you have? Is Tammy?
Okay. The road that's in question, it is the State Road?
State Road, yes.
So the development will have to adhere to what VDOT says?
Yes.
And site distance and everything will have to be complied as well, right?
Right, and you can see that VDOT made those comments.
Okay. All right, what's the limit, what's the most dogs that will ever be on this property?
At this point, we're proposing a 30-dog runs, so you would have 30 dogs, and then there would be two separate whelping areas potentially. We're only planning on breeding two to maybe three litters a year, so those spaces would only be used during those times. But at most, you're looking at 30 dogs on site at one time.
So are you looking at letting 30 dogs out into the runs at the same time, or are you going to, or would you give us a set number saying the ones that will be outside, there will only be X number of dogs out per hour, or two hours, or whatever the timeframe is?
Yeah, 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 yeah. Dogs will be rotated throughout the day. Most of them will be kept in the indoor kennel. They'll be led into that outside run immediately outside, so there'll be an inside run of four by four feet, and then outside that run immediately a four by eight kennel. And then if I can go back to this, this courtyard area is going to be divided into kind of four areas, so dogs will be led out into that, but then they'll be back into their kennel runs and then inside the inside, inside of the building. So you only have so many dogs outside of the building itself free in the runs, and we'll rotate the dogs around, and well, hopefully, there's no dogs immediately next to each other. That's where you get a lot of the barking back and forth and whatnot. So looking at like every third run would maybe be out to try to give them space, and then also in between each run, instead of just a chain link wire fence, there'll be a barrier, and I'm debating on that barrier being either a solid kennel or a concrete barrier in between each one, but trying to divide the kennel so the dogs will have very little interaction in between each other. Because if they have interaction, there's potential for them to try to fight or bark each other and whatnot, so. But maximum 30 dogs in the kennel facility at one time, and then a rotation schedule of in and outside to try to limit how many dogs are really coming in contact with each other. That also keeps it more sanitary when you have less dogs congregating together.
Thank you.
Cortez, did you have a question?
I hear that, I hear and I see what you're doing as far as, I apologize. I hear and I see what you're doing as far as the noise. I believe you're rotating like that for the noise. I guess my question is, with the residents that's currently there, and I know that you say you're going to build your family home there, can you provide any other, because I hear you say that your work hours will be from nine to five, but can you provide anything else as far as noise for the residents and the citizens that's been here and been here a long time, and they have the homes there? What else, is there something that you can do as far as when you're building these buildings to control the noise? Can you offer anything else?
Yes. Inside the building, inside the building where the four by four runs will be, you can design sound-absorbing materials in there, and we will do that on the outside ceiling of the outside kennel as well, so that we cannot have, the fewer hard, hard surfaces you have, the less the noise will echo, right? So it'll depend on how we design that, but we'll try to get, incorporate as many sound dampening features as we can to knock down the noise. One. Two, we can also plan to build an emerald green protective wall fence of trees at a certain distance around the kennel facility or nearer to the road to try to help dampen the noise that is coming from it as well. I read the comments earlier from some of the letters that were written as well. One lady was so nice to research how much the decibel level would be at her property, so I thank her for that. I think that was maybe you guys? Nope, the Hinkles?
They're not here.
They're not here? But they said in their letter that they expected a decibel level of 75 at their home property, which is about the equivalent to how most people listen to their TV or vacuum cleaner running in their house. So that was one of the adjoining properties. So with our setback distance and then the distance required to their, the sound dampening measures that we'll install into the building, and then if we install, or when we install the, it's like an emerald green white cedar tree people may have seen around properties, it uses a sound dampening barrier, hopefully we can limit as much sound going to other homes and other properties in the area. My wife wouldn't remind me that also the dogs will not have free run at night either. Once they're let out for their evening exercise or run, they'll be back inside the kennels at night, so shouldn't expect a 3:00 AM wake-up call from 30 dogs barking at once. Everybody will be back in their kennel run, heated and air-conditioned, fed and watered, and then in the morning time, everybody will be let out in their rotation schedule and so on.
So, Cortez, are you done? I'm sorry. Sure, okay.
Is there any type of licensing for the kennels? Is there one through New Kent? Is there a specific license for kennels?
There's a kennel facility where it says not more than $20, over $20 or under, under 20 dogs kennel facility and under 50, but that's if you personally own the dogs for rabies vaccinations and stuff like that.
Okay, but are there limitations based on the licensing?
I'm not aware of anything else on a kennel boarding facility like this. That is under a personal use kennel, as far as I know, for like some of the hunters that maybe own a large kennel of dogs or something.
And for Kelly, if it were a hunting club with a similar number of dogs, are there, is this by right in A1, or is this?
Yeah. It is.
So without any conditions at all, a hunting club could have 30 dogs?
Yeah.
Without any other conditions that we could apply?
You could personally have 30 dogs in A1 without any conditions.
Okay, thank you.
That would be outdoor dogs. They might be housed, other than a doghouse.
Right.
Could I add a quick comment? A couple of comments have been made about the, the term "commercial." Commercial, uh, this is a relatively small boarding facility. If you look around at some of the large facilities, hundred, two hundred dogs, I've seen kennel facilities for. Uh, so this is a relatively small kennel facility in that business world. And the term "commercial" comes in because we're taking money for a service, not necessarily, you know, but we're not, I'm not looking to expand this to fifty dogs or to a hundred dogs. We, we've, we've done, we've done the calculations and we're quite comfortable at thirty being enough to sustain us and to have a, have a life there. So, I just wanted to address the, the commercial aspect of it. It's because we're taking money for a service, it's not gonna be fifty, sixty, eighty, hundred, two hundred dogs on-site.
I'm sorry, Madam Chair, have a question?
Sure.
Have you estimated the distance actually to the closest existing residence from where you proposed to put it?
I only did from the road. So, the state, the closest point on State Road using Google Map actually came up with seven hundred feet where I was stationed, but I, I just made it safely five hundred feet. So, that's to State Road, I didn't go to any other residences.
Mr. Bennett, did you have a question?
Yes, sir. Is this facility gonna be staffed twenty-four seven prior to you placing your residents at the parcel?
Not at this time. So, we'll be there, I will be there outside at nine to five hours, that was an hour to be closer than we can hopefully per kennels in our business. Uh, but obviously, I would be there earlier and later, uh, with the security systems at home. Until we're able to build our property. We're hoping to establish this and then a year, two years later, those are, are home there.
Who brought you the mic?
No, Mark just didn't use his, I think. Uh, sorry, Gary.
So, first of all, I have to commend you on your slideshow showing pictures of your beautiful daughter and your pup, and puppies on a slideshow. That's clever. You're, it said you're an avid bird, uh, bird dog. I'm not a bird dog guy, but have you run, I'm sorry, have you run an operation like this before? Have you been involved in a kennel like this before yourself?
Previously, my, uh, my friend does Utah, and I worked with a professional dog trainer there. His business was around kennel in and out. I worked with him for about five years as the mission to my whole job. So, I was there doing his facility, I was just taking a week. Being in the bird dog world though, I'm kind of becoming a breeder. I'm, I'm heavily involved in this world, like I said, I take a lot of feedback. Multiple of my other breeder friends running the commercial dog boarding facility and breeding as well. So, I'm drawn with a large faith in people that help me with that. But I do have experience with professional breeders out there for five years or so.
Okay, any other questions? Is that it, Gary? Okay, Laura?
Is it fair to say that the boarding that you're gonna be doing is, is more specialized boarding? Me, meaning you're, you're gonna be specializing in training and potentially boarding hunting dogs?
Correct.
As, as opposed to just, you know, a, anybody off, off the street wanting to board their poodle for a couple of weeks?
Poodles are pretty.
Well, that, that's true, that's true, they are, okay.
Poodles are, are a lot of dogs.
Yeah, yes, they are.
Uh, both. I do enjoy training dogs for open bird hunting, and I have access to about four thousand acres in the county now. Do the majority of my training on there. Uh, but certainly, sure, in certain cases, could be done with the facility as well. But, when it comes to doing a large bulk of the dog training, that I may be doing with any hunting dogs. And I wanna make a distinction between a bird dog and a hound dog. A bird dog is much more under control of the handler and close working range, it has maybe a recall. And I don't want to speak highly of hound, but they're, they're two different animals, two different dogs. The hound dog is a good, they're set, they just go as far as you go to, you know, bird dogs will work with the handler, work with the hunter, be close, relatively close ranging and under my control. Keep my dog on GPS, I'll leave it a grab, if you do that. So, there is a distinction between that. But my desire is to train more bird-like dogs. And then, I can't possibly train very bird dogs to do a good job though. But then the boarding side of it, you know, boarding someone with a poodle would, would also just help the facility sustain itself. And then during times of the year where people are hunting with their dogs, October through February, uh, about boarding dogs in the coming end, it helps the business stay sustainable throughout the year as opposed to only getting a word from February to September with dogs. So, it would, it would do both.
I have another question.
Okay.
If he decides to take this from thirty dogs to fifty dogs to a hundred dogs, would, 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 would be the limitation on that? Could you?
That, that depends on if you put a condition on the number of dogs.
Okay.
If the condition is very, without coming back and getting in and out of the kennel.
Okay.
But who would monitor that?
If, if it's a condition of use permit, it's, it's a zone of correlation, it will.
One other question, in regards to, I think he may be, have to answer this one. In regards to the dogs, I heard the dogs that he said he's gonna train. Do you ever take in dogs that could potentially, uh, uh, you know, hurt some folks? You know, dogs that has, did something major? Yeah, do you take those type of dogs?
Um, we'll have a questionnaire to study process before dogs come in. We'll address health issues with the dogs coming in beforehand, veterinary screenings and those kind of things. Federaries required or, or health agencies required to, to mitigate dog bite injuries that they get and the death of the palate that they happen to them, so there is a public record of that, I guess we could go to. But, there's a questionnaire that we'll have for health, turn, and age of the dog, and those kind of things. And hopefully, they can beat that out of them. But I think, some people put a dog in strange places, this little, little whatever, puppy, and she's a freight dog all the time, and you put them in strange places with other, with other things going on. Bird dog, so there, there always is that. Some of that would come in with, when you approach a dog in the kennel, if the dog is cowering and hiding from you, you know, you start approaching it, it's different, you're trying to make sure. And then you call the owner immediately and say, hey, this is a bad person, you can't even talk to your dog. It's normal, should be concerned, and so should we have an argument, discuss it, or get a private.
Okay, 'cause I, I was more thinking of, thank you for answering that question. I was more thinking of, I know that there have been cases of people, say, fighting dogs, and then they're bringing them over to your kennel, and if they get open or out to the neighbors, what would happen? Along that line?
Uh, along with the kennel design facility, one of the first and foremost things is to be safe. And that means safe for all dogs and safe for all dogs with the other dogs.
Okay.
All the cages would be closed and topped, kept a good working order, and therefore, hopefully, and then if any kind of escapes.
Okay.
Possibly had, um, they are dogs, sometimes bad things happen. But, through the kennel design, we would hopefully address all the safety issues we deserve. Having double fences and having double gates, so even if they get out of one gate, there's another fence row there to put them actually get to the outside. So, having multiple layers of fencing, doors, things to get through, but hopefully, we'll address any kind of runaway issues.
Okay. Okay.
But that just goes into the safety of the time.
Okay.
Madam Chair.
Yes, sir.
How many, how long is a stay for like one dog? For instance, how, how often are they rotated out? If you have thirty dogs, are they rotating?
Depending on how many dogs we have in a time. There's only so many hours in the day. If we have fewer dogs, then we could let these dogs.
No, I mean, dogs that are incoming versus the dogs that are outgoing to their owners.
That, that is such an open-ended question. You may have had a relative in, in Roanoke that's had a heart attack and you don't want to deal with your dog, you don't want to deal with it before. You're like, I don't know how long it would be gone for, I'm playing it for three days, two days, one day. So, I mean, how long a dog may stay there, and the boarding scenario of it is very open-ended. My training services where I train dogs for bird hunting, I have two programs that I run. A puppy program with eight weeks long, so that my dog will be with me for eight weeks to get his, his strength and introduction birds, and pet fire, and be colored, and kenneling, and basic events. And then, if you're the next step, fully breaking the dog, and they're there twelve to sixteen weeks. So, some dogs could be boarded quite some time with me. I have one gentleman that mostly trains his dogs, and he just wants his dogs to live with me, and he just takes a hundred and thirty for him. The, how long a dog may stay is a very, very open-ended question.
But owners are free to, during operating hours, to free to come and go to visit the dog or see how the training's going or whatever?
Yeah, yeah, that's by appointment only. If, uh, if I do have an owner's dog for sixteen weeks, I expect them to make several visits there throughout that sixteen weeks. Want to check the progress of their dog, I send them videos and pictures and regular updates, but at some point, they need to come in and work with the command of the dog as well. So, you know, there should be some sort of easy sessions with that. But again, I have four thousandish acres or so that I do the majority of my training on, it's a waiting facility. So, some of those site visits may not be on, on this property, they may be on other properties.
And when you finally have your residents established at the site, is it likely that your hours of operation for the owners to come in and out to broaden?
Hopefully not, I'm gonna have a lot too. But, uh, obviously, with being there on-site, it's always easier to say, yes, if someone needs to come in at eight o'clock at night to pick up their dog. But, um, we'll try to stay making that. Billy said I would have a lot too.
Anything else, Gary?
Do you foresee any issues with the disposal, disposal of waste or hair or anything like that?
So, I meant that the Health Department treats you to this, uh, they'll set the standards of what we need for a safety system. Again, it will be pure waste, it will be washing down the septic system. You have to have filters on the drains to catch hair, which we probably do daily, you know, but for solid waste, I said that we collect it and we put it in the rest of the sets, uh, once or twice daily, depending on how many dogs we need to have in. So, that requirement will be set by the Health Department, that will be covered, so. Thanks for that.
Yeah.
I mean, if there are any issues with that, who monitors that, Kelly? The Health Department? If there's a complaint, is that what happens?
Yeah.
You know, that would be just like you set the system, build it at your home. You know, I'll be, I'll set up, set the system to be acquired, that's the ability, and the Health Department requires, and it'll get plumped. If things are more frequently moving when you live at your home, or if they're three years, five years, or if they're five years, they're in your home. I would assume that we would probably do it more often than that, because there's probably a lot of hair. And what goes off, it's gonna make it a consistent place. But, uh, it would be the same if you're at home, set the system, though, you want to get that fixed.
Okay. Okay, Laura?
And what, when you're, all, all the water from washing down the runs, all that would go into the septic system? It wouldn't be, it wouldn't be channeled toward stormwater runoff?
No.
And how?
There would be some site runoff potentially.
Yeah.
The way you build the building, it's slow, runoff from the building itself, but, you know, the, the building sizes that we're here talking about, it's gonna be roughly around four thousand square feet. It's not a, usually even one house, our house would be. It would be more runoff.
And how fu, how far is that from the, uh, the reservoir? Just to, just to be clear.
The distance from there to the reservoir.
Well, yeah, so, one of the, one of the commentators men, mentioned the runoff, runoff to the, the Daisken. I didn't think it was that close, but, okay.
I'm, I'm north of the interstate, the property's north of the interstate.
Yeah, okay.
And so, I, I.
Okay, so. Okay, alright, I just wanna, I just wanted to get that clarified.
Any other questions or comments or speculation?
So, just to put the conditions in this regarding the, uh.
The number.
Design that you mentioned as far as the noise, uh, and the bird dogs or whatever, um, those type of conditions that go in.
Kelly, yeah?
One, one page, I'm having thirty dogs. We were designing thirty runs for dogs, and then two whelping areas, so you could have two working out there, and be thirty, two dogs. And then if they whelped with the puppies, it seemed to be six to ten puppies. You know, so, I wouldn't wanna pay thirty dogs, and then I had a female who welped litter, and then she had eight dogs, and then someone comes, and I have thirty-nine dogs. I don't want to get, again, my desire is not to get a huge, I was saying, if you did put it at thirty, and I had one female, I had puppies, that technically it would, so, I'd have to do the evaluation. See, not be so.
Yeah, I can see you. I'm just, I'm, I'm thinking about your, your business and the citizens that's already living at the property as well.
So, would those dogs that you're littering, they're, those would be your dogs?
Yes.
So, we could limit it to thirty boarders?
Yes, yes.
Or thirty in the kennel runs?
Thirty runs.
Thirty runs, and then you would deal with the puppies, 'cause usually, they all kind of stay together, right?
Yeah, like I said, then it'll be a whelping suite.
Yeah.
There'll be a assigned section for them and the mother to welcome there and be there. And then they'll have their separate outside run, because you don't want puppies until they're manipulated with that team and whatnot to be in with other dogs. So, that area would be separate from where the runs are and the dogs, so you can have, they can have their own individual, small. For puppies, you'll get a ten by fifteen area for, you know.
And then you should be able to get rid of them by, by eight weeks? 'Cause I'm assuming you wanna sell them, right?
Yeah, eight to ten weeks.
Okay.
Well, eventually, when you become a breeder, you usually think about keeping a dog out there if you're littering. Most of them will be for sale, yes. And eight weeks is kind of the standard of where you're gonna get dogs through. But I have someone to clearly pick a dog up out of the litter before at fourteen weeks, just for positive, just this. But yes, the majority of the dogs are holding.
Well, at fourteen weeks, would it still be with the mother?
No, no, it would still be in that whelping pit area, it would stay there, the mother would be at home.
Okay.
Do, do the runs ever house more than one dog?
No, not the way that I'm, that I wanna do it. The area that Jenny's had, I think it's sufficient for four dogs.
Mr. Chair.
Yes, Mr. Moynihan?
Are you okay with the ten conditions at the planning?
I believe so.
Okay.
I have a question.
Yes?
Apologies. When we set conditions, and how are we going by the check to make sure these conditions are met? Because I remember, uh, someone coming in in regards to, I believe it was solar panels, and one of the conditions where they were gonna build something to block, uh, the solar panels, and it was never done. So, my question is, how are we, if we approve something like this, for the sake of the, uh, neighbors that's already there? We have to think about them. How are we going to ensure that this business complies with the, uh, conditions?
When you set conditions, it's kind of the same thing as following the zoning ordinance.
Okay.
So, typically, in condition of use permit situations, honestly, it's the surrounding property owners who keep us in check. Because that's kind of what happened with the solar farm.
Okay.
Um, they knew that all these conditions were laid out. I don't have the staff to go around, you know, with all of these, but if we get a call on something, saying, hey, can you...
I don't have the staff to go around, you know, with all of these, but if we get a call on something and saying, hey, can you look at this use permit, it's gotta be there with the conditions, whether it's such and such. You know, Kenny goes out and inspects it, and if they're not in compliance with their use permit, it's the same possibility as zoning violation.
Okay. Thank you.
Laura, go ahead. What do you have to? On that same notion, is there, uh, what is, do you know what the county ordinance is on dogs barking? There's, there's a certain time that they're not supposed to bark, correct?
I was hoping that when I asked the sheriff's office for comments, they would have been a little bit more helpful with those. I, I don't know.
I, um, I, Kelly, Kelly, what we've heard is twenty minutes of constant barking from the same animal. That it, then it needs to be reported. It could be reported to animals.
Any time of the day or certain time?
Uh, that, that, I don't know, I'm sorry.
That's not in our code.
The sheriff's department and then animal.
I mean, ti-
Yeah.
Typically, typically noise ordinances-
Right.
Are usually from about ten, ten, ten to six, ro- probably.
Ten AM and six AM?
Yes, yes, sorry, sorry.
Um, and, and, and again, the, the, the goal is to have the dog inside and sleeping on their cot.
Sure.
And, and be in doors and not have too much frequent outside access.
Sounds pretty sweet, take humans?
Yeah, I heard cot up there, that's pretty good.
We go by thirty six cops, we're about to feel terror.
I know there is a time, uh-
Oh, too many people.
One more time, okay. I know there is a time limit. Um, I, I've talked to the sheriff's office before about this. There is a time limit, um, when it, when it comes to, uh, noise, um, continuous noise. But I don't know what that time limit is. Um, I would have to do the research on that again.
I'm, I'm a little worried.
Okay.
Have you gone around and met your neighbors?
I wanted to, I was advised against that, my wife, she said nobody wanted anybody hot going in. During the pandemic.
True.
Um, I did try to look at addresses and try to find a few numbers, make a few phone calls, uh, ask Kelly if she had any, uh, any emails before, at the power plant beforehand, so they could have a look at it. But, uh, I would have liked to have done that, but, but more people would be foot off by it this time. I appreciate that.
And-
Mr. Moore?
Um, Kelly, could you, um, for the audience, um, when was the first available information about this given out to the public?
The ad, I was looking at the advertising, um, have the, the first notice goes in the newspaper, two weeks prior to the meeting. Go, no less than five days or greater than twenty one days, so what we do is we advertise for two consecutive weeks in the newspaper.
Okay.
The APO letters must be mailed out within five days of the meeting, or mailed on the one day.
Okay, thank you.
The same as the signpost.
Thank you.
The application's been in the office since June. But the public hearing notes requirements.
Mrs. Townsend, Patty?
Um, can't even lose my train of thought here. What we do tonight, though, still remember the opportunity for the citizens, you do have availability to go to the board of supervisors.
Right.
So, therefore, I'm, I'm sort of looking in, at this situation is that in this piece of property, we could have the hunting dogs there in no house. And then there's nothing that you can do. Now, I have been to some, some facilities of these boarding kennels and they have really tight acoustics in the buildings. So, you don't hear any dogs on the inside, basically, when you go out to these parking lots. Um, and if you're going to be a, a reputable one, you'd make sure it's gonna be that way anyway. Because you don't want a dog keeping another dog up all night just by barking. Um, but I would like to kind of go back to the ten requirements.
Mm-hmm.
Uh, you stated, have the limitation put on the, I can't talk with this thing on. Have the limitation of how many dogs? And that, would you be agreeable to the amount of dogs in the kennel run?
As in one per run and thirty runs?
Mm-hmm.
Yeah.
Would it be a total of thirty on each, thirty, and then you'd have the two suites? So, would that be something that everybody would agree that we have a limitation of thirty dogs?
Thirty dogs or thirty runs?
Thirty, thirty dogs in the run.
Thirty dogs per run, thirty, one per run.
Does that hinder the breeding though? Or you're just saying that's, that's what that would be? It would, that would be-
That would just be the dogs, and the whelping section is where the breeding was big. That's where the dog, you know, the puppies.
Right, right.
There's a distinction between the dogs aborted and the females that you would own as your female dogs that you would breed.
Yeah.
They're not, they're not included in the count, right?
Mm-hmm.
Yeah, they're, they're- My, my wife gave me a bit of a, kind of a session to me, some people may have the desire, they bring in two dogs and have them work together at the same-
That's what I was thinking before.
You know, so some people may have the desire to have their two, two all at once in, in the run together. I don't want that equivalent of the thirty dogs, thirty runs, I, I don't want one thirty run because there could be a scenario where-
There's a couple.
Three baskets and they've been separated and they're together for a while.
But, well, I think I would be one of your customers, I have a blonde dog and then a dog that's sort of ill and the two of them have to be together. Um, or they won't eat, you know, they have this separation anxiety.
Like I said, I don't think that's an equivalent over the number of dogs it is, but-
But that-
I had three customers that wanted two dogs in one run and I can't, I didn't, I don't want to say, I can't do that.
But that would mean you would be completely full also, which is not, I mean, yes, you'd want that, but that's not gonna be all the time, I wouldn't think. So, it's, you're saying, I-
To address also about the fullness of it. We're planning on being fifty percent full most of the year. So, we're planning on having fifteen run for a large number of the year. So, to address some of the traffic concerns that my neighbors may have, and I understand those. Um, you know, we're not expecting an extra hundred cars a day to come up and down state, but, dogs comes in for a week, they drop off on Friday, they come back to take up the problem Thursday or whatever. We're expecting to have fifteen as dogs, so, you know, and sometimes a year, yeah, you're full, you know, but we're not expecting to be full of thirty dogs and thirty different people coming in and out every day. Uh, a dog can be there for a day, two, three, or a week, or two weeks, maybe, maybe some of maybe six weeks in under the training program, so. Um, but it's one of the pressures of the traffic for the department. Sorry.
Will you have employees?
Um, initially, we're planning on only myself and my wife handling the facility, but obviously, once we get to a point where we could, we would like to re-pon some staff. Um, whether that's a full-time employee, a management, or whether it's a couple of partner employees, that's, that's where it's available if we get to a possible business. But I think anybody that's willing to start a small business in the state or in the country, or a company for several years, it gets to that point, before you feel comfortable and stable enough to be like, hey, I'm responsible for you and I'm paying you every week, every month.
Mm-hmm.
So, uh, it will, it will be, um, yeah.
And do you foresee, you foresee taking the animals other places to possibly train them as well, correct?
Yeah, yeah, um, like I said, I have, I have a fortunate, have access to a large number of acres, uh, that provide a lot of different habitats. And only we can train the bird dogs. But I do have them on riding landscapes, wild birds, uh, in, in very different bird.
Okay.
I have a question.
Go ahead, what'd you say?
You said that you didn't want us to get hung up on the thirty dogs, thirty runs. Um, I keep going back to that based on the neighbors that's there. And I, you know, again, they're living there, they're already there. So, if you have three dogs in a run and two in another run, and I'm looking at the limitation, based on, this is a residential area. Right now, what I'm hearing is A one is a limit to thirty doll, thirty one, thirty dollars, is it? What is it?
A one is not limited at all.
It's not?
I can put two hundred dollars. Uh, I said I don't want to cook, I don't want to make it seem like I'm equivocating over thirty. I want to stay at thirty runs, I just didn't want to be in the confines of a condition. If one of my customers wanted two dollars in one run and now I have thirty one dollars. Or a handful of my, uh, clients wanted one or two dollars to get out of a run. So, if he said that strict number thirty and his tenants in here come to this, if my two dogs have to be together, then I have to leave another open and I have those two dogs in there. Or if he sets the place of one dog per run and then it's one, one or two animals would stay in one, then it would be a five, it's a four, yeah. So, I don't, I don't want to make it sound like I'm equivocating over the number. I'm just, I'm foreseeing circumstances that may be a contradiction of the one dog per run or the thirty dog, if that were to be changed place.
Would thirty five be a number, would that be better? Thirty five, thirty runs?
Yeah, I, I, I think thirty five would be, certainly.
Why don't we just set thirty one?
Thirty runs.
Thirty runs.
That's what I was gonna say.
I'm trying to, I'm trying to, I'm trying to, I mean, yeah, I, I think that could be manageable. I just didn't, like I said, I just wanted, I just didn't want to, like, handle control officer come by and, and something happens and he goes to me concerned with dogs and says, oh, your order says you have thirty, but you have thirty three, you're dead.
But if we stayed away from the number of dogs and we just said no more than thirty kennel runs?
Well, still, you may have a double in one pen.
Correct, but we stay away from the number of dogs, so-
And just limit it to the number of kennels.
Right.
And hopefully that would, that's awesome.
I, I'm gonna think that's a health violation if you do. So, one way or the other, that's gonna be a problem.
My thought, my thought would be you do it for the thirty dogs, but you have two of the runs that could have the capability of having two dogs in there. So, you up it for that opportunity up to, to the thirty two. But I do believe we need to have a limitation on this because I wouldn't really feel comfortable saying you could have two hundred dogs.
No, I, I, I don't want to be comfortable with that. But I like, I like the thirty runs, that's what we, we decided that we think is manageable for us and they get small staff. Uh, and then, you know, if we would set the number of thirty five dogs and that about four, a couple of dogs, we two, oh, a run or thirty six, maybe. Somewhere in there, I think is maybe, a, an acceptable number. And then, if there was ever a future that we didn't want to go to forty, we'd have to go through the process of changing the condition and our wastewater and all that stuff, whatever you're interested in. Again, I, I don't foresee that, but-
When, when do you foresee building your home?
Home?
Mm-hmm.
We would like to build within two years of the kennel facility being completed.
Because I wouldn't imagine you would want the nuisance of dogs barking all the time either.
Um, we would like to start building the kennel facility in the spring of next year. And then we would like to be able to build there within two years. Our daughter will be graduated from doctoral honors and living to, you can, uh, that is cool anyway, so, uh, we can know where she's at and then once that's done, we'll be, we'll be comfortable. But in the meantime, we would have a large presence of the office there today and then we would be preparing to go to the side, to get our clarity, we're, we're doing dark, public garden, we must have that. We would be actively communicating there.
Laura?
Um, the, the idea of, of limiting the runs, num- number of dogs is, you know, that, I think that's appropriate, but, you know, it's more about the, the sound attenuation, frankly. I mean, that's what, that's what most, most of the people are worried about. Um, considering their, uh, Kelly, considering that, that you have a, a provision into that they'll work with VDOT on all the requirements, it, is there something that, uh, an additional condition that we can put in that will, where they will, um, submit the design such that it's in keeping with, um, good sound attenuation practices and they're using appropriate building materials? Some, something, something of that, of that nature to ensure that, that it, it is built properly?
Yeah, um, you can put a condition regarding something like that. I'd have to deal with the experts from the building side to see what kind of materials specifically.
Mm-hmm.
If there is something, um, you should put in a condition.
Okay. Uh, you know, I'm just, I'm just trying to think of so- something, something else that, that is, is re- really a- attainable and tang- tangible.
Patty?
They're, uh, there's, I think it was Towns, or there, there are, you know, when you're outside of some of these facilities, you may have, you know, some of those, there's dogs inside. And, and our research related, there, there are definitely materials that are made to help sound dampening, the, the sound of dogs. Especially inside the buildings, we can set this up outside, get it, like I said, we could, we could try to put a natural barrier, a certain distance from the kennel, usually like kennel, grape trees or, or a number of other things to try to, try to dampen that. And, you know, we're going beyond the, the distance requirement and conditions back off the road, so we are trying to get a little bit further back and try to, you know, some angles. But my house is really the closest building. So, I, I, I don't-
But this is still, this is still a lot of light and air, right?
It's a cold one.
It's a cold one. It's A one.
Miss- Mr. Moore?
Madam. Madam Chairman, um, again, I believe probably another, was it twelve years ago, we did a sound decimal testing? And I think we came up with that the pushmore was eighty decimals. Um, so when we were looking at this numbers here, the, the dog barking was rated at seventy five, it would still be less than normal activity that would be in your neighborhood.
It shouldn't be a controversy more than twenty minutes.
Well, hopefully not.
Is that one dog though, or?
Several. But, uh, getting back to, to your comment, so underneath these conditions here, do we want to require, put a buffer?
I think there, there, there is one, I think, someplace.
The, the, I, Kelly, um, condition two talks about, shall provide a seventy fi- foot undisturbed vegetative buffer, but that, that's not necessarily-
The facility.
The, the, the emerald green trees are what, what, what he, what he was referring to, correct?
Correct.
So, we could, we could a- ask for, for a, an additional screen, uh, um, vegetative screening?
A solid screening. So, I believe the trees that he's talking about would be something like a green giant arbor vida, which would give you a forty foot tops and it would give you a fifteen foot circumference at the bottom. So, it's a solid mass and the sound would pass, bounce off that mass.
Yeah.
So, I would say the, the landscape that you choose is, needs to be a, sort of like a solid landscape, not like lob lolly ponds.
Yeah, that's the tree that was, that's a little counts.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
So, that's just for the stream, right? That's not for the, that's not for the children.
That's for that perimeter of the property.
Yeah, I'm, I'm with her too.
You want in addition to sound attenuation, not in the, in the building?
I think that'd be most appropriate to add on to condition one.
Yeah.
Yeah, something about, uh, you can add any building.
Yeah.
On number three, we could add the thirty runs.
Thirty runs? Or just thirty?
Exactly with the two bucks.
I'm sorry.
Exactly the two bucks. Thirty dollars, thirty, thirty five.
We should just put the thirty runs. That's my, my personal opinion.
Okay, so the other issue- Okay, so the other issue is the sound, but I think if we address the material, building materials and where, do we need to put a rotation into our, our requirement saying that the dogs have to be rotated? They can't all be outside at the same time?
That's an enforcement nightmare.
That's his business.
And he said that that's going to happen, didn't he?
Yeah, he said he didn't want all the dogs out at one time.
I mean, that's, yeah, fr- frankly, from a, an animal management perspective, that, that's the, the only, the only thing that ma- that makes good sense to, to ensure the safety of your, of, of your animal. Frankly, and especially if you're, if you're boarding somebody else's dog, you're going to want to make sure that they don't get hurt. I mean, that's a, that's a, that's a stand, that's a standard practice. Okay, so we can.
There is a Virginia coal loss too, and they, they thought about replacing those, but they were burned down in the last, they've said. But there, there are some requirements, there were some requirements of dogs, they're going to play in groups of four and three together. But I'm not intended to do that unless they're family dogs that are boarded together, kept there, hopefully. People's dog, uh, like that.
Anything else from anybody?
Okay, so are we going to change the wording on like number one in regards to the building materials?
I think so, but I don't know what to. Kelly's got something.
Application, applicant to include standard sound dampening construction techniques typically associated with kennels.
Inside and outside.
Sound depends, sound depends.
Application to include all. Application to include current sound dampening techniques typically found in dog breeding operations inside and outside. Something to that effect.
Were you going to add something to number two?
Number three, he had a remark.
Yeah, number three, all animals should be kept in pens and other enclosures and limited to thirty runs and thirty-five dogs as designed and maintained secure safety and confinement.
We have to get your mic out and say that again.
I'm sorry, geez. Okay, um, I, I know. All, all animals should be kept in pens and other enclosures and limited to thirty runs and thirty-five dogs as designed and maintained secure, safety, and confinement.
You may want to.
I'm sorry, go ahead, except, swelping and personal dogs. But you can live with that? Okay. We're putting the demands on you, okay?
I just didn't want the scenario happened where my two dogs had to work.
Right. I agree.
There's two dogs in there, I just, I just pulled a few down there by.
And I think you can, you can understand your neighbor's concerns.
I do.
So that's, that's why we're doing this. Patty?
Are y'all ready for me to?
Are you all ready for this?
Our designated motion person.
Really, really quickly, I should, uh, thank the planning department for their great help in this. It's like, we, we may, we may do this. Hopefully, uh, some of our neighbors that are here, hopefully, um, be, uh, meaningful to somebody. Thank you.
And remember again, once we take a vote, this vote does go to the board of supervisors. So even if you have more concerns, you still have the ample time to go in and place it to your board of supervisor.
And speak at that meeting as well.
In order to address, protect, and promote public convenience, necessity, general welfare, and good zoning practices in the county, I move to adopt resolution number PC zero five two zero to forward the application CUP dash two zero. Excuse, I mean, excuse me, it's zero two dash two zero to the New Kent County Board of Supervisors with the amended items in the conditions with a favorable recommendation.
Sherry, you pull the members?
Yes, Ms. Chairwoman, so the, um, motion for Ms. Townsend to forward a favorable recommendation to the board of supervisors with the amended commission, with the amended conditions as noted in items one and three, how say you, Mr. Davis?
Aye.
Mr. Tiller?
abstain.
Mr. Moyer?
Aye.
Mr. LaBreschel?
Aye.
Dr. Schmidt?
Aye.
Ms. Butler?
Aye.
Ms. Townsend?
Aye.
Ms. Rose?
Aye.
Ms. Thomas?
Aye.
Mr. Bennett?
Now you can bow, rub both shoulders, aye.
Thank you. And Ms. Pearson?
Aye.
Thank you, the motion does carry.
All right, thank you. Okay, does Katie have to close it, or she already closed it? Let me just move on. Okay. Going to move on to number nine. Hopefully get through the rest of this quickly. Is there any new business? Kelly, is there any new business that?
Um, I don't think so.
No.
Ms. Chairman?
Yes.
We've got a staff report, but we need it.
Okay.
I, I would just like to, um, inform the, um, planning commission that we do have two AFD withdrawal applications that have been reviewed by the AFD Advisory Committee on July the fifteenth. And those will come to you before you at your August seventeenth meeting for your recommendation to the board.
Okay. Thank you, Sherry. Anything else, Kelly? Any new?
No.
And I don't have a chairman's report, other than, I really wish this pandemic would get over with, but I don't think, I think we're in it for the long haul, for a little while longer, so.
And there's been no, uh, Plan RVA meetings?
No Plan RVA meetings, okay. A commis- uh, commis- any other commissioners' reports?
Still have commissioners, uh, concern, Mr. Moyer. It's not your district, though, it's dispatch in two forty-nine.
Why?
I still have some. The traffic in that particular area is still getting, it, it's been okay since the pandemic, but just prior to the pandemic, though, it's literally like driving in the city of Richmond. So I do have some major concerns that that's going to be an issue coming up, especially if we have any more businesses come through that neighborhood.
Thank you, Pam. Any other commissioners have a report they'd like to, or something to talk about? Go ahead, Joe.
Um, just reporting real quickly, uh, I'm in the, uh, certified planning commissioner training.
Oh, good.
So I will say, it's been very beneficial so far, it's been very informative, I've enjoyed it. Um, the one drawback is because of all this, uh, we did it virtually, so we did it in two days at a Zoom meeting.
Sure.
Which was done as best as it could be done, considering, but, uh, even, even with that, I've, I've been impressed with the speaker so far.
Good.
Um, with the, I've got homework assignments and.
Oh, yeah.
But it's very beneficial, I recommend it. Certainly, if you haven't done it, it's, uh, so far, it's been a great experience and, um, we'll, it'll be two more days coming up in September. Hopefully, we'll be able to go to BCU to wrap it up, but.
Great.
Anyway, I, I do recommend this, it's been very good.
Yeah. Thanks, Joe, thanks for sharing that. Anyone else? All right, staff reports?
Sherry covered it already.
Oh, well.
But I want to say, um, for the August meeting, since it's just the two AFD withdrawal applications, I guess depending on how you feel about how things went tonight, we could go back to a conference call.
A virtual thing.
See, I thought this one would be good to have, especially because I do that.
Definitely. I can't imagine moderating that over the telephone, yeah.
I thought, I mean, I hope we did okay.
No, I think you did fine.
I don't know if anyone will come out for the, the August meeting, so I guess we can kind of see how it goes and decide if it would, like, this.
Yeah, I think if that's the only thing on there, I'm all for the virtual if everybody else is, so. Okay, but if anything else comes up, let us know and to.
Sherry, is that AFD committee via teleconference, did it work well? And we are still under the emergency order to cover that.
Oh, okay, good. Okay, so the next meeting is on August seventeenth and it could possibly be virtual. And we're going to adjourn this meeting at nine thirty. Everybody good at that? All right. I can't wait to get this mask on.